So we're going to open up our workshop. We have four pretty interesting, hopefully you find them interesting, items today. And the first one, and I see we have a crowd here, I want to recognize the audience. We have Sheriff John Ward. We have Brookings City Council member and Currie Budget Committee member Brad Alcorn. We also have Assessor Jim Cullen. We have County Clerk Renee Cullen. We have Chief Assistant to our District Attorney Stacy DeLong. And we have several distinguished members of Currie County. And I see in the background there Captain Phil McDonald, Currie County Sheriff's Office. So, are we going by the agenda here?
Yeah.
So far. Okay, so amendment approval of the agenda, board? Move approval? Any discussion on that? Call for the question, Staff Jeswood, please.
Mr. Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Sheriff Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
So where we are, ladies and gentlemen, we were told earlier today that we basically have little time to make a decision on the county's portion of four, almost four and a half million dollars. This is kind of a fascinating time. This is going to be a one-time thing, so there's a lot of interest in spending this money appropriately, wisely, investing. And again, a lot of interest in that. So we have some guidelines here that we could bring up for the board and the audience. This is from Senator Dallas Hurd, and it's a letter that come up almost two months ago now, but it's asking for priorities. At that time, we were looking at housing, we were looking at childcare, we were looking at possibly a Currie Forest program. Still interested in that. A wide variety, we've heard from the Sheriff's Office, and our really, our towers are not in good condition right now. And that's part of our entire communication system for fire, for law enforcement, for medical emergencies, first responders. And so that was one thing, and then I'm going to X that out. Has he been some discussion? I don't know what happened there. Not going to be in. Great.
Click Use as View Only.
Where'd you see that? Oh, thank you. No.
Hit Next.
Don't send, no. Up, up.
Not you, buddy, sorry.
So that underneath the black writing?
Right there, yeah. No, accept.
No extra charge, folks. Done. So the reason I highlighted the red on this, when I first got this about two weeks ago, these are possible ways that we could actually put money back into the road fund reserves. I'm not making that recommendation today, I'm just trying, we're trying to collect all the data we possibly can. Originally wanted to hear from the elected officials and give them an opportunity to present or just offer some insight, somewhat of a relaxed day, first stage, first phase, if you will. And we have a presentation later on today as well. So that's where we are. And then we've got, we've received, the board has a couple of huge documents. This is the first one. Oh, no. That ain't going to work, is it?
View only, same as before.
And I would encourage anybody to read, this is actually 24 pages. It's about a month old now, but it's still quite appropriate for what all the counties, all the cities are dealing with. And another one I want to do here, we'll minus that one for now, is this one right here. This is the most recent, if it comes up properly. And all this information is available from the Commissioner's office. If anybody wants to get this from the National Association of Counties, we've been working very diligently on this whole process. And also while we're waiting here, the state is going to have substantial funds too, and the county, all the counties are going to want to spend considerable time in frankly competing for those funds and making a case for what our top priorities are. So I'll just go down the subheadings here, I think this is the right document. Number one, eligible expenses, support public health response. Some of you might recall that I've always said in, you know, public safety, law enforcement, number one. But it has a new competitor, and that's public, public health. This is just my opinion. But it's interesting that on this document, this is the first one of 10 options that come up. So I'm going to go through these kind of quickly. This, this is primarily tied to economic, the negative aspects of what happened with the COVID-19 pandemic, you see right here. But it's also somewhat broad in its acceptance of how the money can be used for long-term economic recovery and growth. And of course, that makes rural counties particularly happy in a general sense. Premium pay for essential workers, you know, that is, I think, going to be open for our board with discussion. And just simply understanding that, I think is going to be really important. We had quite a discussion today on trying to get people back to work within our, within our little county, and there's been 1,300 people that have been identified that are eligible for work and are not working. Not, that doesn't mean that all those citizens are getting unemployment, but it is, it is a topic that's generated a lot of interest and concern in citizens throughout the entire country.
Can you get your mic on?
Am I pretty, yeah. Can we speak up a little bit, Sheriff? Thank you. Payroll expenses for public health and public safety employees. That's a topic that deserves some discussion. Does, does public safety automatically likewise represent first responders? Replace public sector revenue loss? That's going to need some definition. I'm not sure if I can read right here, the recovery funds used to replace revenue loss. Does that mean that if you had a bad budget or you had a deficit that you could use the funds? I think that's going to be a real tough area. I don't think that's the intent, but you know, we need to learn all we can first to determine how and where we qualify. Very interested in this. We also had quite a discussion today at our board meeting, water and sewer infrastructure. Water's going to become a bigger and bigger issue in all of Oregon. And most of our communities need a boost. They need some help. They need, they have water issues. Director Crockett, spent quite a bit of time in this, Planning Director, and I've also done my, done some fairly detailed work in understanding the 100-year water plan for Oregon, what that means for rural Oregon. We're, I don't know if I fully agree that we are in a drought year, but we know something, we know we're in a tough fire season coming up, at least it certainly appears that way right now. But again, just to emphasize a little bit, every community in our county has some water issues that they could use a boost here or there. And everything is going to come to satisfy Salem, everything, Salem, excuse me, everything is going to come to planning for every community. Broadband infrastructure, I think we're making some good progress there through Kuzkuri Electric and also to some extent Zipley Fiber. Eligible expenses, we'll need to, we'll need to understand so we don't get, make decisions there that wouldn't support the, properly the guidelines. Reporting requirements, that takes a lot of staff time, but part of the process, I think there's only a couple more key definitions, we don't need to spend any time on that right now. I think there's one more. No, maybe that was it. Nope, appendix, okay, fair enough. So this is available again to anybody that might, might have interest in this. I think, I'm sure the cities have received this. And it's, it's tied in with the state somewhat, but essentially we're dealing directly with the federal government, the money comes straight into the Treasury. So elected officials, I'd like to hear from you first. We also have three comment sheets from the public, welcome. But does anybody have anything, Sheriff Ward, Assessor Cullen, Clerk Cullen, anybody they want to offer? You're welcome to go first. We're taking notes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Jim Cullen, Currie County Assessor. And you know, I have to tell you, I really, all that I've looked at so far on this has been the PowerPoint presentation that was one of the documents that you put up there. I think you said it was 23 pages or whatever, and it's kind of hard to discern from that all the possibilities. I think I'd like to see the Reader's Digest version of this from AOC to, to give us a better idea of what the monies can and cannot be used for. But it seems like what you're just going through here, it's almost like a sum of money that could be used to give grants with. And so maybe, maybe what you'd be looking for is for entities that are interested in these funds to apply for the funds by a certain deadline and then go through all of those applications and determine which of the applications you think are most important to Currie County and fund those with whatever funding is available. That's all that I have for now until I've had a better chance to take a look at it.
Very good. Mr. Ricker, Director.
I just had a quick comment to Assessor Cullen. So this document that Commissioner Boyce has put up there, the first four page, actually the, starts on page two and goes through page four, it's a summary of the rest of the document. So, so this is a pretty good document to look at, it gives you that Reader's Digest version and then the detail.
Thank you.
Page two through four?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Sheriff Ward?
Morning, Commissioner. Sheriff Ward, Currie County Sheriff's Office. The last meeting we had, we basically explained why, what the funding we could use for, and not just Sheriff's Office, but for the entire county, first responders, fire departments, homeless services, law enforcement, whatever. I mean, whatever communication comes out of our dispatch center to the rest of the county is very critical and crucial to our county's survival. Communications is key to law enforcement. So we are at, all our equipment down in their dispatch center, let me back up a little bit. We did go through and replace the microwave backbone system, but there's still a lot of work that needs to be done with all the repeaters. And I think there's, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around 30 something repeaters that have, going to have to be replaced because they're all outdated, they're not supported anymore. But what we're asking for, for the key communications out of our dispatch center is the Goldilocks Councils. And so we had a proposal from Day Wireless. We brought it forward through Commissioner Pash to the Commissioners. And what I understand was approved, or at least agreed upon that that's what the money should be used for. It's nothing that, you know, it's just going to support the Sheriff's Office only, it's for the entire county and all our law enforcement and all our first responders, including the ones I just named. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but other than this point, that's about all I have.
Sheriff, wasn't that bill about 700,000?
705. 710,000, somewhere around there.
And that, the best, the best scenario is at least 20 years that that would be, you know, there's no guarantee, but that's a reasonable assumption if I recall.
That's exactly true. I mean, everything that we have down there now is, like I say, is all outdated and not supported, and it needs to be upgraded, updated. And it's just a matter of when, not if, it's when it's going to fail. We've already experienced over several years of failures. We just had a pretty good failure here recently, and Day Wireless is able to piece it together. So it's going to have to be replaced one way or the other, and you have the money right now to do it. I would say let's do it without having to raid the road fund to do it eventually.
Sheriff, for the pub, for the public, could you tie in with the city of Brookings and their dispatch? I mean, how they use, what systems and the connection there?
They have their own dispatch center. It's kind of a backup. They can't really dispatch from their area to the rest of the county, but we can dispatch into Brookings. All our 911 calls and systems will, if our system goes down, we can transfer over to Brookings, they can handle the 911 calls and refer them to us, and vice versa.
Commissioner Pash?
Might understand, I think Brookings has the same board that you're looking to put in here.
Yes, they, they've already upgraded to the new system, so.
Sheriff or Captain, do we, did we get a timeframe on that? It'd be, that'd probably be a two, three-year project, wouldn't it?
Actually, no. When the microwaves came in and we did the microwave backbone, that was a little over a year because of the parts and pieces had to be ordered from out of the country. But this is a system of three years?
Three months.
Oh.
They said they could, if I'm correct, Captain, when I spoke to them, they said it would be about three months and it would be ready to go.
Right, all the systems are built here in the United States and that it can be installed fairly.
They have them in stock, they said.
Very quickly.
So do you have anything else on your, go ahead, Captain?
I was going to say which, I know I heard October earlier today, but I actually took the time and read through the whole act. And when you read through the whole act, the whole federal legislation, it lists not just the monies that go to the counties, but it lists all the other monies throughout the whole document, where there's 50 billion here and 30 million there, just list after list of every, whether it's homeless coalitions, whether it's workers' comp, whether, or not workers' comp, but whether it's unemployment, whether it's, you name it. If, when you read that federal legislation, there is a list or a amount of money that goes towards those through grant programs, whether it's restaurants, just list after list after list. So if you haven't read, at the very first page that, that I think Commissioner Boyce emailed out, there's a letter from the governor or something from the state of Oregon.
Or 10 points, yeah.
There's two little "hears" that you can click on, but when you click on the first one, it takes you to the federal legislation where you can read the whole thing. And then when you click on the second one, it takes you to the governor's, what she recommends should be done with it. But when you take time to read the whole thing, you'll realize it not only covers what's allowed for the county money, but it also shows this is money that goes towards every other group out there, from competitive grants to everything else. So there's a ton of money out there that has come through this. My only recommendation is, number one, I brought this to you quite some time ago, or the Sheriff's Office did, because even though, yes, the Sheriff's Office is bringing it forward, it's not like, I said in the meeting, at the Commissioners' meeting, it's not like I'm asking for new guns or new toys or new like that. What I'm trying to do is look out for the citizens of the county, and it's like the Sheriff said, it's, the system's already been fixed, it's been fixed with spare parts, with used spare parts. It's just like, you know, so it's not, like the Sheriff said, it's not if it breaks, it's when it breaks, and there's no more used spare parts available because everything's been crushed and sent to China to be melted down and remade into something else. So that's the problem that we're at. I mean, they don't make spare parts for DeSoto's anymore, and that's what we have. I mean, so, and we've got to take care of that. This is, this was all purchased with, like I said originally, this was all purchased with a federal grant. We have the opportunity to take care of the county infrastructure, which is specifically allowed in the act to take care of county infrastructure. And that, yes, there are all kinds of other things that are mentioned, but specifically allowed is county infrastructure. And this is a $718,000, I think is the exact quote, bill that you guys all talk about, the county has financial problems. This is a, this is a way to take care of a huge issue facing the county that doesn't directly reflect or doesn't directly come out of the taxpayer's pocket.
Commissioner Herzog.
Question for Phil or John. Have we looked into, have you guys looked into grant funding for this?
There are no other grant programs out there for this.
Okay.
When you look at, when you look at, oh, communications types grant, communication type grants, for what we're asking for, like the state of Oregon every year through the emergency management grants and some of that kind of stuff through FEMA grants, they'll get 2.5 million dollars for those kind of projects. Well, when you're asking for 718,000 of 2.5 million that they have to split up everywhere, they don't fund you. I've tried that, so.
Been there, done that.
I've written that grant, submitted it, and been denied, so.
So Day Wireless is really the only bidder on this contract?
Okay, so it's a Motorola product?
Yes.
And Day Wireless is the Motorola provider?
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And they're our service provider. They're who we have our, our maintenance contracts with, yes, but it is a Motorola product specific to them, so.
Okay. Anything else, Ward? Thank you. Let's go to Planning Director Crockett, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to talk. I'm Becky Crockett, the Currie County Planning Director. I'm going to be very brief here. We solicited input from the Housing Committee on this issue recently, and Commissioner Herzog was there. Really, the emphasis from the committee was to make sure that there was a good public process in which people would have the opportunity to give their opinion on how the money should be spent. There was the discussion about having groups together, special groups, to discuss and solicit input from on how to spend the money. Secondly, in regards to the Housing Committee, Mike Lehman did introduce a person that's working with him, both Stephanie Hadley as well as Mike Lehman said that any effort by the county to pursue funding for a housing effort, they wanted to help be involved in that, to coordinate that effort with efforts for housing, specifically workforce housing within Currie County specifically. So I just want to put that out there, if we do put some of the money towards a housing element, there are people ready and willing to help enhance that opportunity for other funding purposes. In the area of housing for, specifically for Currie County, we're to the point where we want to look at a specific project with specific land in mind to do workforce housing. And we're at this kind of crux of a place where we really need a project manager to initiate that project and bring it forward to fruition. There's a lot of momentum and a lot of opportunity to make that happen, but we don't have here at Currie County somebody that can pick the reins up to that project and actually deliver it. Just a side note in regards to infrastructure, we have one major sector of infrastructure that's causing a major impediment to development in Currie County, it's in South County, that's the Harbor Sanitary District. They seem to be resistant to expanding their service area. It's causing a lot of potential development to literally be on hold. I have no idea if the county commissioners want to be involved in that politics, but I'm putting that out there as maybe there's the coercion to encourage them to apply for some of this money, which would open up a lot of acreage for development, which we need desperately. That's all.
Thank you.
Question? It's okay. Thank you very much. Committee member and Councilman, Brookings Councilman Alcorn.
Good afternoon, all. The Brookings, I'm Brad Alcorn, Brookings City Council. At Monday's council meeting, this topic was discussed in anticipation of this workshop. The council asked me to come and attend the workshop, knowing that you guys will be making some decisions about how the money's going to be spent. We will be doing the same, and the sense I got from the rest of the council was perhaps we can communicate each other's needs and, and spend the money with the, the best way that we can for the citizens of, of this county. So the, I'm the liaison, as you know, to, to all of you, and we just want to extend that and, and make sure that we're, we're available when you guys are. We'd love to sit down and talk, and, and we're here.
Thank you, Councilman Alcorn. Just so the public knows, what, Brookings got 2.0, what was it? I can't remember.
I don't know. Lou, do you know?
1.3 is what we're estimating, and we don't get it directly to the Treasury. We have to make some data, so we haven't gotten anything yet, but so we're pretty good.
I did not see you sneak in, or I would have recognized you. Thank you for being here. Okay, that helps. That helps.
So hopefully we can, we can all get together and, and talk in the future.
Hey, thanks for that offer and that reminder. Very good. Did you have something?
Just prioritize and?
Good.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Good. And then I did not see County Treasurer David Barnes. Welcome.
Thank you, County Treasurer Dave Barnes. It took an awful lot to get this money here. The process for signing up for it was three days of my time. It was really a brutal process. But last week, we received $2,226,456 as our first installment of the ARP money. I've, I've read through the paperwork like Captain McDonald, bless you for having done so. It's an amazingly difficult read, but I have also read through all the paperwork. And while I understand the, the desire to go for bigger projects, I believe it was item number two is helping out the community itself. And one of the things that I've done in that vein is, I would like to, I would like to see the people, this morning, in the committee meeting, the board discussed a $1,000 bonus for people going back to work. And I mentioned something then, and I'd like to expound on a little bit more now. I'd like to see, I'd like to see some of this money used to give a bonus to the people who've stayed at work. You know, we have approximately 800 people, 700 people who work in our food stores and our gas stations in this county. You know, they've gone to work every day, and they've served the people who have been collecting unemployment plus the extra benefits. But they've gone to work every day, they haven't gotten anything extra. You know, they've gotten the same stimulus checks that everybody else has gotten. You know, I'd like to see a, a part of this money sent into a pool to be divided up amongst people like that. You know, there's so many people that are working in the county right now, that I would like to see part of it, Group A and a Group B, where we give some out of the first half, and when we get the rest of the money from the government in December, we give something to the rest of the people. I strongly believe in the Sheriff's Communications Issue. You know, that is an infrastructure, that is an infrastructure project that will affect and benefit everybody in this county. It's $710,000. If we take that and divide it in two, so if we could make two payments on that, it would be $320,000 out of each one of our installments. That would leave a total of 1.866 million dollars left to distribute amongst other people and other groups. I, I don't think this is the right time for suggestions on that, but one of the things that we're going to discuss later, when you go back to the business meeting, is the formation of a stakeholder group. And besides just getting input from people about what type of things they, we should be allocating this money for, I, I know that it's the board's final decision on where the money goes to, but I would like to see the group, a stakeholders group put together that could make recommendations to the board. You know, I know that everybody in this room and up at the front of this table is busy like I am. We don't have the time to sit down and go through everything. I'd like to see us put together a panel that would go through the applications, go through the recommendations, and then report back to the board and have a meeting and decide where this money gets allocated. I've, I've been reading a lot on, I call it OCTFO, it's the Oregon Association of County Treasurers and Finance Officers. And there's been a lot of chatter on there about what people are doing for this and, and how they how they want to allocate it. And there's as many different, every, there's something in every column somebody wants to allocate to. Our senators all got, our state senators all got 4 million dollars each to allocate within their own districts. Our representatives got 2 million dollars each. From what I read, Senator Selden Heard invest, is allocating all of his money to projects in Coos and Douglas County. None of it is coming to Curry. I, I saw that Representative Smith is allocating a large portion of his to a project abandoned to redo the docks up there. So I just, I, I would like to see what other money is available to bring in. As we said, you know, there's a synergy that can be grained. There's economies of scale that can be gained if we can help out the city of Brookings and the city of Brookings can help out the county. If we can help out Gold Beach and Gold Beach can help out the county. Same with North County. There's a lot of money here, and this is the one time that I think it's, it's really time for everybody to set politics aside and come together at the table and do what's best for this county and the most people that we can in it. We have two-thirds of our, of our residents, I believe, are retired, which leaves about 7,000 people part of the workforce. If we can give, if we can give money to the seven or 800 who work in retail and in different stores, that's 10% of the, that's 10% of our workforce that we're helping out right away. You know, I, I went over to McKay's and I spoke to the people over there yesterday, mentioned it to them. I was asking to get a ballpark figure on numbers so I would know how much it would cost. And when I was done talking to them, one of the women who works over there got up and said, can I give you a hug? You know, just that would be the greatest thing for us. I, I was on the phone yesterday with the CEO of McKay's. I've been in touch with the people down at Fred Meyer's, and this would be something that would be huge for their people to be able to give all of their employees who've come to work, like I said, every day. They've dealt with the abuse. They've dealt with the people, and they've been serving the people who've been collecting unemployment. So, you know, we get this money now. We get another installment in December, and I just, I'd really like to urge putting together a committee to, to talk about this, to put together an application process, and to, to be able to move forward with it all together for, you know, finally, you know, let's all come together on this and do what we can. Thank you.
Mr. Barnes, don't leave the microphone yet.
Yes, okay.
On that committee, we can talk about this later, but you know, I've had people express to me concern that it would be political and depending on who the commissioners appointed. So I appreciate that you mentioned you want to be on guard for that, and I think that's highly important. But I did have one more question, and that was, and I'm pretty sure what your answer will be, and you're in-depth reading, do you feel like there's no wiggle room for a rainy day fund or a reserve fund?
I've seen, I've, actually I've seen.
It's a little confusing, isn't it?
When it came up, when it came up before, I noticed on one of the printouts that it says there is money for a rainy day fund, but then I saw another, the most recent one that came out, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, says that a rainy day fund is off, is not something that would be acceptable. And my own personal opinion on it, this is meant to be money that we get back into the community to help the community, and I think that putting it away in a rainy day fund defeats the purpose, the true purpose of the money, which is to help out the community, help out the people in need, help our, with our infrastructure projects and things like that. So I, I would shy away from a rainy day fund, but I don't have a vote on that one, so.
So, one word, investment. Can I ask you, what's the first thing that comes to your mind? And you may have already communicated that in your recommendation for consideration to, I guess would be bonus pay to people that stayed working, but what's, if we, if this county was to invest in something for the long-term future, assuming and presuming it comes under the guidelines, what would your, what would your initial thought be on that? I won't hold you to it because this is something we're going to be working on over time.
Of course. My first, absolutely my first thought would be to the Sheriff's Communication Issues. They have problems on their towers. They have problems with their communications, and that affects everybody in this county. Three years ago during the Chetco bar fire, I got phone calls from Sheriff's Communication System when the fire reached up as far as Pistol River, I believe.
Pretty close.
Yeah, when it got to be within 10 or 15 miles of my house, I got the first phone calls from the Sheriff's Communication System that letting me know that the fire was at this point. So you know, that's, that's hugely critical to everybody in this county, especially as we, you know, fires is a way of life out on the, on the West Coast. So the second thing that I think is almost equally as important is that all of the people, all of the districts with water issues, I believe, you know, if we can do something for the water issues. I was real happy to hear you guys this morning commit to $10,000 to Langlois Water to get that project up, up and running. You know, there's a lot, if you can put in $10,000 and get a $3 million project out of it, hooray, you won. You know, there, there's no beating that one. So projects like that, yes. Those are the infrastructure projects I have in mind right now. I don't know enough about other issues that are faced, that we're facing with our infrastructure. I just heard Becky mention the sewage issue down with Harbor Sand and not wanting to expand anymore down there. Perhaps we could, you know, somebody could open a conversation with them about it and see if there's something that could be done on that side to open that up. But then again, like I said, my, my favoritism leans towards helping out the people who have been there, the, the essential people, the people who have fed us, who have gassed our cars, who have sold us clothing over the, over the last year. You know, the ones that have kept going to work when they could have very easily gotten out of work, collected unemployment, gotten the unemployment kicker, and be making more than they were making when they were on the job. So you know, I really.
Herzog, do you have anything?
No.
Hi, Capash?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who am I overlooking here? We have three people, Connie Hunter, welcome. We have three people for public comment. Who else am I? Okay. Diana Cooper, you're first, please.
Hopefully that doesn't fall. So I also looked over a lot of that online, and I just wanted to kind of echo a little bit actually of what Barnes said, about what Dave said. So I think the American Rescue Plan funds will expedite our exit from the pandemic if we use the money wisely, but also, you know, if we use it kind of boldly in a way that maybe some of our other funding hasn't been used or hasn't been allowed to be used. So one, we do need to work together. The less restricted funds will go much further if we match them with state and federal restricted funding. For example, the county could use some of the funding to build affordable housing and match this with state funding. That's happened in Yamhill County, and they matched some of the state dollars to purchase housing with their county funding, or they are in the process of that, for operational costs. Number two, I think it's imperative that we hear from more of the community about their priorities and needs before we set things in motion, as governments tend to do. So effective spending happens when representatives from various sectors are present, and I would encourage the Board of Commissioners to put together a survey or, or kind of what Dave was talking about, putting together a group of stakeholders, and to kind of understand what's actually needed by the community before the spending happens. We need to help the most vulnerable now before the program, problem grows beyond our local control, as we've seen in multiple areas, including Medford, Portland, Salem, having issues, you know, with not just people without housing, but people who are essential workers struggling. I think that we have a moral mandate to build a societal safety net, and helping the most vulnerable is a good start. Curry County currently doesn't have a single shelter in operation, and I think, aside from that, as far as workers, the American Rescue Plan can provide a down payment on improved wages for essential workers who show up to work every day. As Dave said, those that have been putting fuel in our cars and making our sandwiches and, and helping us with our groceries. And they shouldn't have to spend their entire shift worrying about the cost of living. The effects of wage inequality locally, coupled with the housing crisis, have met more people losing their housing, struggling with anxiety, depression, relapses, domestic violence, and creating barriers for individuals and families who are trying to work and live in our community. Number four, investing in infrastructure. If preparedness for disaster wasn't a priority before, it should be now. Rebuilding water systems, increasing access to internet, communications, all of that. So we should be helping residents now and also investing this money for a better future. This means we need more input. We also need to be bold with the funding and match it and stretch it. There is a lot of federal funding coming down, and I think matching, having an application process and matching these with federal dollars or state dollars would be, would, would make it stretch and go a lot farther.
Ms. Cooper, always good to see you, and I apologize for not properly recognizing you, Director of the Brookings Core Response Team.
Thank you.
New organization that is doing some wonderful things in South County. Thank you. Good to have you here. Dallas Ott, please.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, you gotta adjust the microphone each time you come up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak here today. My name's Dallas Ott. I'd like to share with you my experiences with the housing crisis. A little bit about me first. I grew up in Southern Oregon, had to leave when Mount St. Helens blew, and my family had to move to Washington to help clean up the mountain. Always hoped I'd make it back. Always considered Southern Oregon my home. I worked really hard through life. Did not end up where I ended up when I moved to Curry County. I worked through college full-time, went to school full-time at night, did National Guard on the weekends, did ROTC on the weekends, and that's how I paid for my Bachelor of Science right before I was deployed to the Persian Gulf. Came back, combat-wounded veteran, went and got my Masters in Business, got my Masters in Teaching, went and worked for National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, ran an agency there that rationalized the Halibut and Sable Fisheries. Worked for USDA doing grants and loans for rural communities such as ours, and had a federal contract that fed the soldiers at Fort Lewis. Worked really hard to not end up where I ended up when I moved here, which was almost Moved here after a divorce, wanted to heal, could not find a place to live except for a room in a home out in the country with drug dealers living on the property, who would come into my room when I wasn't there. And it's a good thing they didn't come in when I was there. Eventually I found a place to live where I lived for three years without heat, until I finally found a house by the grace of God because I was two weeks from being homeless. I share this with you because if this can happen to me, it can happen to any of us, and it is happening to a lot of people in our community. You cannot have a healthy community without healthy citizens who are working, and they can't work if they can't afford to live here. So we are losing a qualified workforce in this community that cannot find housing. So I, I plead with you to keep this in mind when you are looking at resources for our community. We are losing folks out of our community. We are having people who are homeless. I was almost homeless. I lived in, in terrible conditions until I finally found a place. And it's humbling. It's humbling to spend your life working so you, you, you're going to have security, so that you're going to have a roof over your head. And I, it was very scary, and I see a lot of people in our community who are desperate, trying to figure this out, trying to figure out how to earn enough money. Even if they make money, they still have to find a place. Even if there's a place on the market, which is rare, to be able to afford that and qualify for it, it's, 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 it's a crisis in this community, and I really want to enforce that to you, that you cannot have a healthy community unless you have healthy citizens, and you can't have healthy citizens if they don't have a place to live. Please take the roadblocks away, the red tape away. I have a house with a property. I could put a tiny house in the back, but all I've heard is why I can't do that. Why I can't do that? Because I've got to pay this, and I got to do this, and I got to do this. Figure this out, okay? Because this crisis is here, and it's not going to get better. It's going to get worse. We've got to deal with it. Let's get together and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. Sure? Yes?
On that note, I would say since I've been a commissioner, probably has been brought up to me more than any other topic in this county, is not only the housing shortage, but people being homeless because they cannot find a dwelling in this county that they can afford. And I just had another call the other day from someone wanting, I mean, they, they just said, we just moved, I just came here because of a divorce, and I am now, I'm going to be homeless if I can't find a place in the next three days. And it's the biggest thing that I've had people talk to me about since I've been in office.
Ms. Ott, wonderful to have you here, and you used the word crisis, and that, I don't think you find anybody who would disagree with that as a, as a, as an improper statement. I've been here four years, and it comes up all the time, and the biggest frustration we have is probably dealing with land use planning at the state level, and then just the sheer fact of buildable lands that we don't have to change that process. But I think our Housing Committee that we put together about two months ago or a little more is really doing some, some good work, and we are aware and really appreciate you being here, and I think this board is willing to, to do the hard work. Dan Sherman, please.
Yes, good afternoon and thank you. And everybody's pretty much said, I guess, what needs to be said, which is that we have a housing crisis here. It is my understanding that one of the things you can do with this money is to essentially waive the system development fees. I understand that can run like 20, 30,000 dollars, which if you're putting in a tiny home, man, that's a big chunk of change to have to lay down. And Dallas was talking about she's been told why she can't do it, why she can't do it, why she can't. This is one of the reasons why you can't do it. It's because it's just financially prohibitive. So what I would like to suggest is that you consider using some of these funds to essentially waive the system development fees and provide encouragement for people, for builders to come in and build, for people like Dallas to put something else on their property. That would be a simple thing to do. You don't lose any money. It's not like you're losing the fees, you're being reimbursed by the COVID money, and it's a win-win-win situation. The construction is a win, the property owner is a win, a workforce worker comes in who can find affordable housing, that's a win. Everybody wins. And so that's really my only point. Let's use some of the money to waive the system development fees so that we can make this affordable. That's the key word, affordable, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Commissioner Herzog?
We, we spoke on that, and Becky could add to this too. We, in our last Housing Commission, Housing Committee meeting, we spoke on that, and you know, the, the thing about that, Mr. Sherman, is, yeah, I, I would like to, I want to see, you know, being able to, on your own land, do something, but there are also, and Brad can probably speak to this as a city councillor, and not, and they might be exorbitant, but, and they could be reduced, but whatever we do, we're going to, we're going to have more, well, you know, crap goes downhill, so that, everything we do is going to accentuate the sewer water usage. So I mean, and I don't know, Mr. Alcorn, if you could speak to systems development, do you know what it is for Brookings right now? Or Becky, do you?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to answer.
No, I, I don't know exactly what it is right now.
I was going to say, the county doesn't really have system development fees. Most of the system development fees that seem prohibitive for people are coming out of the Harbor Sanitary District in the city of Brookings, and it's a really good point. The Harbor Sanitary District fees are really problematic for a lot of people, and that has put people on the street, literally, because they couldn't pay the fees.
Do you have any idea what those?
My understanding is that a hookup is 16... My understanding is that a hookup is $16,000.
Just to hook up to the city?
Just to hook up, yeah. And they charge an additional fee if you have an accessory dwelling unit. So there's two fees. And that is a potential utilization of the money is to waive the fees. The City of Portland did waive system development fees for sewage treatment for a while for their ADUs. So it is something of consideration for the Harbor Sanitary District or, and the City of Brookings.
Can you define that ADU for folks?
I'm sorry. Accessory Dwelling Unit.
And those will be legal by the end of the year, correct? That law passes later this fall?
The law that's hopefully gonna pass by the legislature would allow accessory dwelling units outside the urban growth boundary on rural residential zone land, provided the county adopts an ordinance to allow that. Inside the urban growth boundary, accessory dwelling units are allowed outright by law.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you. We have about five minutes. Hang on one second. Before anybody leaves here that's part of the citizenry, if you would be interested in serving on our Advisory Committee, Stakeholders Committee, the application process, I can promise you will be easy to find on the county website. May not be right now, but this is, assuming the board approves that later today, and I assume that they will. We need you to be involved if you can. Five minutes. Captain McDonald, come on up, please.
Actually, I'm just gonna say, my name's Phil McDonald. I live in the City of Gold Beach, and I'm currently building an ADU on my property for my mother and father-in-law. The City of Gold Beach actually waives the hookup fees if you tie into your existing water and sewer. And so you have to, and they have just a very brief plan review. It doesn't cost you $16,000. Now, if you want a whole new hookup, you have to pay the hookup fees, but there are ways. So like I said, in Gold Beach right now, they are promoting people to do this. And I'm, like I said, I'm currently building one right now. So it's doable, and the fees can be waived. I just, as a citizen, I wanted to throw that out. I know I'm dressed like something else.
Thank you. Connie, you wanna come up real quick, please?
Planning Director Becky is wonderful to work with on the Housing Committee. And I told her I would come, and if she left something out, I would speak. She didn't leave anything out, by the way, so I'm speaking as a private citizen. One of the things that came up and has come up for a number of times is a piece of infrastructure that sits outside of Lone Ranch. I think it's, there's about a $10 million price tag to put in the water and sewer system. I'm not sure all the details of what that would be. But without that, of course, we can't build the housing that needs to be built in that area near the college. And at one point in time, Rio Tinto was talking about how they could do that. And there was some conversation with the City of Brookings regarding that, well, if the City of Brookings could come up with a way to get that funded, then that would move Rio Tinto to actually maybe do something or to allow that development. But I just know that's another critical piece of infrastructure that if it's not in place, it really stops our ability to provide housing. And one of the things that Rio Tinto is interested in doing is considering another piece of property, it's my understanding, to be used and maybe even donated for affordable housing. Thank you.
Mr. Herzog?
Does anybody know, like, Rainbow Rock Condos is just south of the college. The college is probably, what, on, are they on a septic, or does any, are they a septic system, or? Because I think the condos, the Rainbow Rock condos, have their sewage and water, they have a little, no? Yes, no?
It's my understanding that, and I don't know what, if it's on a septic system or not at the college. But I know that there's a piece of infrastructure that has to do with water and sewer, it's my understanding, memory serves, that needs to be in place in order to get that infrastructure to work inside that buildable area. So, of course, Janelle Howard can give you more information on that, or Gary Milliman. But I know that's something that I personally reached out to USDA Rural Development and went up to Bend to a USDA Rural Development training a few years ago. In fact, Director Schmelzer went as well. And we found a grant. The problem was some of the criteria that the City of Brookings did not meet on its own. So I don't know the details of that. Of course, this brings up, to me, another piece of the puzzle that we don't have in place, just as far as organizational infrastructure within the county, and that has to do with the Council of Governments, you know, to really look at that. But I'm definitely in favor of having a stakeholders group to talk about how we can spend this money. Every idea that has come forward here today and every suggestion has its own kind of validity, and we just need to prioritize those things. And I think a stakeholders committee would provide that structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you here. Mr. Sherman, I got one comment from a citizen earlier today. Quickly, "I'd like to see a portion of city development and utility hookup fees waived for affordable housing construction, plus maybe some grants to ease construction cost. It's the biggest obstacle to our community when teachers, doctors, and others can't find affordable housing in order to provide essential work." And then that's basically the crux of their assessor calling?
So I'm not sure when people say having fees waived, if that's really what they're asking for. And I'd hope not, because, you know, I don't think any of the water or sanitary districts are getting rich off their hookup fees or anything. They're dealing with aging infrastructure, and those hookup fees are one of the ways that they help keep their monthly rates lower by, you know, charging fees to new hookups onto their system. So I think that I heard one of the people say that not necessarily waive the fees, but use a portion of the money to help pay those fees for affordable housing, which seems like a pretty reasonable request, as opposed to just looking at the districts and asking them to waive their fees. Because they have expenses, and they need to be able to take care of those. And every new home on a system, whether it's a water or sewage disposal system, that creates additional costs for the system. So, you know, I don't think that there's any of those water or sewer districts out there that are really rich and maybe can afford that sort of benevolence.
Thank you, assessor calling. You gotta go up the microphone, please. Yeah, come on. Thank you. Last call. Director Crockett?
Thank you. I just want to say that there currently is a request in Commissioner Herzog's in-basket today to link up with Janelle, to invite her to the next Housing Committee meeting to talk about this very issue. How do we move forward with the Borax property? And is it a possibility in a reasonable manner to provide housing?
Thank you again. Commissioner Pash?
I would just also like to ask, you know, these are funds, and we've got a number here of 4.4 million. It might be nice to get in touch with all of our state, you know, federal senators and Congress, and our state reps and Senator as well, and find out exactly what they've been allocated and how much money they're gonna put into Curry County. I mean, if we've got, you know, Senator Wyden's office or Senator Merkley's office, I heard, is getting 4 million each, and I'm not sure I heard that correctly.
State senators?
There, well, I understand that there was some federal money going as well.
It was, the state senators are getting 4 million each, and the state representative's got 2 million each.
Okay.
I don't know about Wyden. I don't know about the federal-level people.
Okay, I'm sorry. But anyway.
It's through the ARP plan. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
To contact them and ask them, you know, okay, where are you going to be spending those dollars, and how much of that's going to be coming to Curry County? Because now we may have $5 million instead of 4.4. And that would maybe help some of the decisions of the committee that we put together and this board to know exactly what we're going to have. Or if, like, Senator Hurd or David Brock Smith were going to put $100,000 into offsetting hookup fees in Harbor, then that's something maybe we don't need to look at or can reduce our budget for that, so.
The only thing I would offer there is, the only thing that comes directly from the federal government, US Treasury, directly to the local government cities and counties, is the ARP plan. Everything else is a pass-through through the state to the county. So, but we do, I think your point is, we have to compete at all levels and be well-advised in all this. So, last call? Thank you all very much. We're gonna go to the next, anybody else? Did you see there? Okay. I saw a hand raised there. Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna go to Item 3B, Hearing Room Media Needs. Director Rickert?
Okay, so Commissioner Pash brought this up some time ago about a few of the needs in this room. So I started working on it with Eric and Miranda to find out what some of our options are for this, to continue to produce these meetings. And so we talked about a range of different things, from the servers, the mixers, the mics, recording software. And they looked into a lot of these things. And so they are ready to present their recommendations to the board for discussion and then hopefully future approval.
Are they coming?
Eric's here.
Can I make a comment while we're waiting for that?
Certainly.
To, you know, to identify the problem even further. Today, we had to fix microphones a couple different times. And I went on the computer during our lunch hour to see how the video played for the military thing. You couldn't hear it through most of it. You had to turn the sound on the computer up to 90 to hear it. So these are all issues that could be solved by a new system here. And it's just sad that anyone that was sitting at home that wanted to hear that and remember a veteran couldn't hear that presentation.
And to that point, maybe we start off with the mixers, which Eric has some information on.
There's Miranda.
She's trying to get away.
Hi. We're all glad to see you both.
Eric Feliciano. Yeah, well, on that point, that's something that, we just had another meeting yesterday, or two days ago, over the phone, and I brought that up. That's a major issue that we haven't even really started discussing yet, and it's kind of separate from the recommendations we have. But that whole system that we use for the web conferencing and for playing videos and monitoring that is, it's just not, it doesn't work. Anytime we have web conferencing and we don't have a direct sound source, it's not compatible with the system. That company wasn't even aware of that model. Last time I tried calling them last year. So, but anyway, that's, that's maybe for next time. As far as the recommendations today, we've talked about, and I have the email up here, we've talked about a couple of recommendations for, first of all, getting the mixer out of the hearing room and into the production office. And that would solve a lot of, just, you know, it'd make things a lot smoother just on the fly. If somebody goes up to a microphone and they're speaking more softly, or they're speaking loudly, I could just, yeah, the push of a, the turn of a knob, we could have that solved. You know, it's, yeah, a lot of times, what's happening in here and what I'm hearing in there is different. And, you know, like, for example, today, when we had the echo, I wasn't aware of it until you said it. Everything sounded good on my end. So, you know, there's certain things like that that would help a lot, getting the mixer into the production office. We talked about the costs associated with that, and I think we were looking at somewhere between 500 and 1,000. And it's pretty much purchasing some cabling, a couple units so that, yeah, those would be compatible with the snake. And, yeah, that's a cheaper alternative to purchasing new mixers, which could potentially be, you know, 2,000-plus, something like that. And these work, these work pretty well. A lot of times, it's just a matter of dealing inconsistencies with volume, different mics, you know, and so on. So that's something that I'd strongly recommend, is getting this system into the production room with the rest of the equipment. We had the topic of the microphones, and Commissioner Pash, you'd mentioned that, you know, everywhere, every other hearing room that you go to, you see the tabletop mics. So I priced those out, and basically to get five of them, we're looking at probably around the same, 500, 2,000, including installation. That's kind of the, depending on what type of base we go with and all that, that's the sort of variable. We can get cheaper ones, but they're battery-powered. So, yeah, that's not, that's not gonna work, because that's gonna open up a whole other range of issues. And I wouldn't have any strong recommendation for whether, either for or against it. I think, I think they'll work. I think they'll work fine, keeping these, you know, they work sometimes when they're on, you know. So I would leave that up to the board to decide if you'd like to try the new system. There wouldn't be any major extra costs associated with it. The install and all that should be pretty easy. And same with moving the mixer. I could, I could do that on myself, maybe with the help of, and I mentioned to Brad, some maintenance. You know, we might have to push up some panels and stuff like that, running cables. But again, we wouldn't have to bring anyone in from outside. And, yeah, I think that's...
Mr. Pash?
Well, a couple things. I'm wondering also on the microphones, you could do a plug-in, a remote plug-in on the wall, and, you know, same thing as here, go up with a cable to the other room, and that way there, that stand could even have one as well. And you could unplug it to move that if you need to. Do you have a, do you have a budget, a number, you know, in mind? And what do you think the total cost of this will be? And I understand we've got about $40,000 in PEG funds on this, am I correct?
Yeah, we do. Miranda Flagge, Economic Development Assistant. So we do have about $40,000 in PEG, which of course is used for, you know, capital cost improvement for producing the meetings to go onto the channel. So the overall cost, we're probably looking, because we do have to update a server, and that server right now is priced at $6,100. We actually have the server in our production room. It was meant for a different purpose. We, I wasn't really trained on that server specifically, so it's been sort of touch and go and trying to figure that out. But I did contact the manufacturer for that server, and they can upgrade the server to play out, which is what we have our other servers doing. However, those ones are about six, six years old, going on seven years old. They're out of date. They won't take any more, any more production videos. When I put new production videos on, taking them off, it leaves a data footprint. It sort of convolutes the whole system, and then the system crashes. So for the last 30 days, unfortunately, I haven't put any of our new meetings up. They are always available on YouTube, so we do make sure that, you know, people know where to go to see them. But as far as playing them out, we're playing, you know, what we've produced before, so we don't have anything new on right now. So that's the most, I think, the most important need right now. Obviously, all this other stuff is right there with it. It just needs upgrade. You know, Moore's Law, when it comes to technology, updates every 14, or every 14 months. So we're constantly having to go with where technology is going. I think, you know, overall, we're probably not gonna spend more than like $10,000 for upgrades. And that, like I said, that doesn't include the audio system. The audio system is a whole nother issue that we haven't really touched base on, but that's gonna need updating. They don't manufacture either the phone system or the soundbar and the actual camera, digital camera. So those aren't even in production anymore, and they don't actually support them. So we do have to find something that will work, because what we have right here is like a little switchboard. We have several different things that are actually doing several on and off switches. So if we're coming in here and we're turning on the audio, it's because we're gonna do some sort of play out with our meetings that are on that computer. And we can't turn either of those on without this little white overhead system, which is also set up to switch between things. So right now, that's probably gonna be the most to actually... So right now, that's probably gonna be the most to actually upgrade. We're gonna need someone who's an IT professional to come in here. I've asked Phil to take a look and he said it probably will cost a lot because all that. And we also have to keep in mind, you know, we will be at some point going from go-to meetings to Microsoft Teams. And there are systems out there that do online meetings and whatnot that do the same sort of, you know, purpose as these digital cameras, but they're specifically for Microsoft Teams. So that's where we wanna go eventually. But right now, we're looking at a server, microphones, I think some odds and ends like cords and whatnot. Yeah. So that, generally, we're really looking about, about $10,000. We will have to buy the support for the server because we'll have to get trained on that really quickly on how to load to that server specifically.
Mr. Herzog?
Is there any way we could do like an itemized sheet and look at that on the 9th of June, the next board meeting? We could have a, you know...
So, and there's really only a couple of items. So you've got the server, which you said was...
$6,100 to upgrade it?
$6,100 for the server, the mixers, $1,000 for the move. The mics was about 500 to $1,000 if we decide to do that. With the mics, it's really pros and cons from what I understand. These mics work great. You have to put them on. The, the stand mic, they work great, but they can get in the way. So you can still bump them, make a loud noise. You could turn them off to, for whatever reason, forget to turn them back on. But, but that's, I guess, really what the board needs to decide. Do we want to change the microphones out and try something different? Or do we just go with the mixer move and the new channel, or the new server? And then the other thing we looked at, that Commissioner Pash had brought up, was some type of recording software. And, but, or more, more of a dictation software. It was brought up that for the record would, would record all that stuff, everything that is being said in here. But as, as Miranda and Eric looked into it a little bit more, it doesn't do that. But there are plenty of other options on the market available that do that. Some of the advantages are that they're, it would record, it would dictate everything being said. And it's smart enough to know that I'm talking and then you're, you're talking and, and it will put your name on that. Now, that would mean that we're moving away from minutes and going toward a full transcript of, of our meetings. But again, there's advantages and disadvantages to that. Advantage being now JJ's, eight hours or more of JJ's time every week is freed up to do other things. Disadvantage is we don't have a summary of what went on. You have a full transcript, which...
Pages and pages.
Yes. So those are a couple of things for, for you guys to decide what you wanna do. The mics, dictation software, and then of course the, the other two items.
Yes, sir.
Good. You know, I don't mind this mic. I don't think Chris likes it. Can I have this and Chris have a stand mic? Is that...
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. I mean, it really is gonna be up to, you know, the individual's preference, obviously. And you, you know, there's pros and cons to this, you know, and like we've talked about the pros and cons to this. You can, you'll hear this on the mic, you know, rather than it being up here because that's all, it's, it's a directional mic. So there are some pros and cons. It's just up to you guys how you wanna proceed and we'll certainly make those changes.
Mr. Pash?
I'd like to say, I mean, and on the, on the mics that I'm talking about, you, you don't have to have the tabletops. You can actually have them mounted right to this.
Yeah, they would be mounted to the very top of the desks.
The nice part to them is if you're gonna cough or sneeze, you just touch it and it shuts off. And you can see there's a big red dot in front of you, so you know it's off. And when it's on, it's green. It's really simple to operate. I don't know how much money we spend a year in batteries on this thing.
Oh, I'm, I'm quite, quite sure it's long.
And like you say, some of the sounds that we don't get...
Oh, they're phantom powered?
Yeah, those are powered directly from the mixer.
Okay.
And so would, so would the, the gooseneck mics.
Okay.
Okay.
So anyway, I mean, for me, I, I think the boom, you know, these, these mics are great and I think they would be great on that too. I mean, those are self-adjusting as well, but again, I'm always seeing you guys running and putting batteries in those things where you have a hard line, no more of that. And, and it's, you can just take the thing and move it around just like those. And there's a red and a green light and, I don't know, for the $500 or $800 it's gonna cost for them. And if you wanna do a couple of them to start and see how they go, that's fine. I'd, I'd be okay with that.
And to be fair, most municipalities have those type of microphones where you're just, you're controlling the on and off switch in front of you.
Is there any way we can just do away with public meetings?
Well...
And then we just talk.
I wanna ask just about, you mentioned the mixer and the servers being a couple of, you know, the high priorities. Did I miss it on the, on the mixer? Is that something that if we upgraded now, that it would probably be technologically sound for a few years? I mean, who knows for sure, but...
It will and it's also, I mean, I think it'll be less distraction as well. Sometimes we'll get comments that, you know, people can't hear and whatnot. But it is that, that distinction that, you know, the mix, mixing agents in here and we're in there listening, you know, or we're in our office listening. So it, it'll save on the adjustment, the time adjustment. He can immediately make that adjustment there. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, about that, so when I was pricing things out, putting the list together for Brad, I was looking at these mixers and they're still in production. They have a newer version of them that has wireless capabilities, but it's more or less the same thing. And they're still selling for over $1,000, probably about the same price as they had purchased them, which must have been, what, four or five years ago or something like that? So assuming it doesn't just fail, like it won't turn on someday, then I, I think we'll get a lot of life out of those, those mixers. Yeah, things like that should last pretty, pretty long time. The only issue we've had lately was a couple of times that the actual cables in the back were loose because these mics are sort of hardwired. And, yeah, that's just a matter of going in there and, yeah, redoing it. But, yeah, to answer your question, I think...
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we would really be needing to replace these anytime soon. One thing I kind of just wanna put out there for the future, along with the Vadio system, is the speaker system in here. We kind of have an issue where even if we have the volume up all the way, we're limited by how much volume we have in the room here. We don't need a lot of volume. You can, you know, we can hear ourselves pretty well in here. But out there, it's, even at the, at the max, it's not really loud enough. And the only way to really make it louder is to turn everything up in the room at the point where it's too much noise in here just so there's enough room, enough noise out there. So, you know, looking into solutions for that, how we, you know, we'll have to maybe get another mixer or something like that to divert the signal and have a separate, you know, the source goes out there separately than what's in here. So there's things like that, that as far as just day-to-day, improving the quality of the presentations and the experience for the public. You know, there's things like that, that ultimately I, I don't think the cost would be very much. You know, for example, to get that solved, again, would probably be under $1,000, maybe more so around 500. It's just a matter of looking into it and figuring out how to integrate it into what we have now.
So the mixer, would that take care of the in-hearing room and the hallway sound?
Well, there's, there would be different, yeah, different ways that we can solve that problem, but it's not really something that I've looked into actively yet. But just wanted to put that out there. If the board is interested, we can, you know, if, maybe we do this again in a few months or something like that, we can get that on the, on the list as well. I think that obviously it's not a major priority, but I, I really think we should take care of that because almost every time I turn, we turn the speakers up, I get somebody that says, hey, can you turn it up? Not really, you know, it's...
You both nod in your head, so that's good. Commissioner Herzog?
So we have to have a speaker out in the hallway?
It's only one time a year.
For overflow.
Yeah, it's an overflow situation.
It's not, not often, but it's, there are times when we need that capability.
Because we've got a lot of space right up here. We could set them on the floor.
So I don't really wanna be in a hurry on this and I, I'm with Commissioner Herzog. I'd like to see a simple itemized deal, not to give you more work or headaches, but I think that would be good for the public and make sure that we're, we're pretty open and transparent. Very happy, thankful that we have the funds to do this. I wanna keep my microphone the way it is just because it's hands-free, but that's just me. You know, so for what that's worth, just gotta remember to put it on my tie, of course. So what else do we have on this board before we go to break and come back?
Well, are we gonna bring back, so on the 9th, we're gonna bring back a discussion and possibly an action item on this for the 9th?
Yeah.
When they present.
If that's not rushing you, I, I've been impressed that you've got it done today and there's been, there's been going off and on for three, four months.
No, I think we can absolutely put that itemized list together and get an action item for you on the 9th.
And then you got the must and the wants, okay? Maybe they're all under the, the must category. And Eric, you had something a minute ago and I think I talked over you there.
Oh, really? The only other, I was just gonna mention a possible solution to the...
Hallway?
The hallway situation would be maybe even sending one of, one of these speakers out there or, you know, because we talked about that, that it's, it's pretty rare. I think it happened today actually, but it's very rare that somebody would be sitting in the back and say, can you speak up? I can't hear. So it seems like, you know, these are kind of doing their job, but I don't know how much you guys need to have that speaker there, for example. I don't know.
Do you get a lot of feedback when you're sitting up there?
That's the first time I've seen it in the four plus years I've been here, the feedback, yeah. So if you're gonna move...
Is it? Okay.
Oh, yeah, that was, I went to mute, I went to mute this one and it somehow unmuted that screen, so...
So if you're gonna move speakers, include a new drill gun in your budget, okay? We won't tell facilities and...
It's good to have two for the different bits, right? But, yeah, and then again, I don't know about the cost that would be associated with the install and if maintenance... In the past, there's been little things that I've done that, you know, maintenance would just come in and help me out with. So I can't imagine it would be much of an issue.
Thanks.
We'll put it all together and, and have it as an action item on the 9th.
Very good.
Thanks.
We've got a clear understanding there. Thank you. Appreciate you both very much. Let's have everybody meet back here at a little after 3:30, please. Oh, Miranda, we're gonna need to get our next virtual on here.
If yours is the next big idea and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
There's a shelter pet who wants to meet you. Meet one today. Visit theshelterpetproject.org. Adopt.
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the, the big, major issues affecting Oregon and for that matter, all Western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire, actively managing our forests so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we as a board have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression. And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources, and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Murph George Jr. and I'm the forest supervisor for the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest. One of the first things is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District Three in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the, and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. Uh, it's, it's really an inspiring, um, showing of, of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our, of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's, that's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. Um, we're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand of all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water because I have told them that we're all born in water. We cannot live without it. It's our job to take care and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio at the Ohio River with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on the riverbank brushing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Heard that. Good eyesight, JJ. I can't tell what that thing is. I thought maybe it was a razorback or something.
I think it's going to get clearer here in a minute.
I think we're on.
We're back on, uh, Curry County Board of Commissioners, May 26, 2021. Uh, workshop. It is 3:35 in the afternoon. Next item is Agenda 3C, uh, Curry County Fleet-wide Vehicle Management. Our workshop. Mr. Alford, we want to welcome you back. Uh, we had you here, I think, two years ago, and boy, a lot has changed, uh, in our country and, uh, with vehicles and demand and, uh, all the above. So it's been great to work with you and, and, uh, yeah, we're, you didn't have to drive down from Portland this time. So, welcome. Can you hear me okay?
He's froze.
Eric, he's froze.
Might be an internet issue on his end.
Oh. Wiggle your little finger if you can hear us.
Would be an, uh, internet issue most, most likely on his side. You don't tend to lose, uh, problems.
There, yeah, you see him starting to move. That's his end. Eric, um, could you, Ryan, could you do us a favor and shut your video off and only use your microphone and that'll speed up the, uh, signal? Here. I know that works in other meetings that I'm on.
Sometimes it works.
Until Beacon broadband comes.
Could you ask him to phone in?
Yeah.
Hang on one second, guys.
Even Beacon broadband won't help it if it's on his end.
No, that's true. We're good, but we're not that good.
What's that?
We're good, but not that good. Is he in Portland?
Mm-hmm.
Man, he should have good internet. You'd think.
If he'd shut his camera off and just used the audio, it would've worked. That might be him calling in.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
I dialed in.
Okay. Yeah, that'll work because your video, your video's using up a lot of your speed is what it is. Okay. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm trying to exit out of the good to do here and that.
Okay.
It's completely crashed my computer. I'm sorry, guys.
Your audio is actually fine. We could do the, uh, screen share from this end if that helps, but I don't know if you'd be able to see it or not.
Yeah.
Or are you picking up our audio?
I'm picking up your audio just fine. I just want to make sure you hear my end up here in echo. So I'll just, uh, dial in from here and just have a conversation and, uh, I did send you over the slide deck. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it or not.
Well, sorry about that, but we can bring it up on our screen. Or we can postpone until the ninth if that helps, till we get, uh, the systems synced up here.
I mean, no, I just, okay, you can start in here. My main goal of this entire conversation is first off, let me start by saying thank you for having me back. Uh, Commissioner Boyce, I know it's, uh, it's been a couple of years since we last connected and we've been talking off and on, and so I appreciate the opportunity to come back and have a conversation with you all.
Welcome back.
Do you hear me okay there?
Yeah, we hear you fine.
Okay, cool. Um, yeah, so, uh, you know, just in conversations with Mr. Boyce over the last couple of years, um, you know, I really wanted to use this opportunity to come back in and just have an open conversation with you all. Um, you know, I recommended a work session so we could just have an open, uh, conversation about the fleet, what you're all looking to do with your fleet, some of the things that, uh, we might be able to help you out with. And since it's been a while, I would provide you all with a high level overview of our, our services, what we do, um, and who we work with.
Doing fine.
Awesome. Uh, before I get too far into it, so I know we're kind of separate time here, so I'll, I'll move pretty quickly, but, um, you know, Commissioner Boyce, can you give me some background of, of, of what kind of what's going on with the fleet today, what you all are looking to at the meeting? And just want to make sure I address everything that you have questions about maybe.
Well, just ways that the county can save money. Um, you know, economical, economic running vehicles, uh, you know, we're, help us assess where the value is, uh, you know, how you can save us money. You sent me an email, what, two days ago that, uh, you know, you thought there were some pretty big savings that we could have there. Um, you know, it's, the program's run through our roadmaster right now who has a pretty full plate, and so naturally I would want to recommend to the board that we consider uh, a different option if we could. And, yeah, like, like we've discussed, in the last two years, a lot of things have changed in used vehicles or value, their, uh, in, in, in our case, the necessity of all of them and, uh, how we could streamline and, uh, presumably hopefully save the taxpayers money.
Yeah, I, I did want to start off with a general industry update. I'm not sure if you're all familiar or listening to the news lately, but, um, due to COVID last year, um, there is a dealer conductor or microchip shortage across, um, the entire world. So what's that, what, how that, you know, pertains to you on both that aspect and the, the vehicle market is that we are at an all-time low when it comes to new inventory on dealer lots. Um, what that's causing is just new car prices to rise because dealers just have low inventory. Um, so, you know, right now what we're seeing out there is a lot of dealers are selling it in SRP, it's a lot of stuff on form of, of markup. Um, you know, some of them are offering certain government incentives that they were normally doing in the past just because of supply being so low. On the flip side of that, to your point, it's driven up the used car market as well. So we're also at an all-time high, um, when it comes to the used vehicle market. So those two things together have really caused, um, a lot of our conversations with our clients has shifted to not only what do you need in the next six to 12 months, but what are your fleets need probably in the next 12, 18, or 24 months? And so right now, we're sitting down with all of our clients, having these conversations, being proactive, ordering vehicles in advance so we can, A, we can make sure that they get a vehicle, and then number two, make sure they get the best price for the vehicle. So that's what's going on in the market right now. I know historically for you all, you bought vehicles in combination of different ways, but a lot of times when you buy a vehicle, the used vehicle. And so again, uh, right now, it's the used car market the way it's at, I wouldn't recommend necessarily going used, um, wouldn't mean that in future years, if that makes sense, for a certain application, but what we're seeing right now, um, is just, yeah, it's, it's a crazy, crazy time to be in the vehicle market.
Commissioner Pash?
Yeah, hi, uh, Ryan. Uh, Commissioner Pash here. I just, um, you know, we're two years into our first three-year cycle of cars and I don't know that the county buys any used vehicles. Um, what we decided to do when you were, or shortly, uh, after you were here last time was to, um, the board went with, uh, having the road department order our vehicles through the government, uh, funding program, which we get a pretty substantial discount on that. And, uh, and then turning, having a three-year turnover on them, and it's so far looking very promising for the county. Uh, as you've just mentioned, the, the chip shortage, uh, and, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm sure you know that's probably going to be ending in the next three to six months. Uh, and yeah, they're going to have to take some time to get those chips back up, but, you know, the chip inventory's back up. But a lot of the issues with COVID have closed some of the factories, and I understand China is now getting back online pretty mu- uh, from last I heard, about 85%. So I also have a, an Oregon dealer license, uh, in full transparency to you, so I have a small lot and I, I do move cars in and out of that. So, um, you know, what we decided to do was put things on a three-year, um, you know, so that just, just as the first warranty is wearing out, um, we're going to put them up, uh, for public surplus auction and sell them, and we believe we can pretty much net-net to the county at least break even, especially in this upmarket, which I believe will continue for at least another year. Um, so, uh, you know, the vehicles that I think we bought last year for 22 or 23,000, I believe now are, are, you know, two years later, they're probably worth as much or more than they were when we purchased them. So it looks like it's going to be a success for us. Um, do I agree with Commissioner Boyce that we could reduce our inventory of vehicles and use the, uh, the current, um, inventory that we have a little bit more efficiently? Yes, I do. I just, um, I don't know that you, i- i- if you can do more for us than that. Uh, I'm, I'm all ears, but I just kind of wanted to give you the, my opinion. Um, and I am the liaison of the road department and Rich has, um, already sold a couple of vehicles that surprised him what they went for. So we're, we're very hopeful that, um, you know, with no warranty, well, you know, with the warranties on new vehicles, that we can, um, before those warranties are up, resell the vehicles at very close to what we paid for them and be a win-win for the county. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, if you like, I'll let you speak to, or ask you to speak to that, Mr. Alford, and then I've got a couple of questions for you, so your call.
No, you hit the nail right on the head. Um, you know, I'm glad that two years ago, we were able to have some conversations about your fleet. And what we're seeing right now in the market, um, I, I may even ask you to be more aggressive in what you're doing. I don't know what particular vehicles you bought back in three years ago or so. Um, I got your fleet list, I was able to dissect it. It looks like most of the vehicles you bought back in 2017 were utility police interceptors. So unless you have some other vehicles in there that I don't have access to, uh, you did buy a C in 2018. Uh, from the fleet list that I got, I don't have any 2019, 2020, or 2021 purchases yet, so, um, and then on top of that, a big part of the conversation that Commissioner Boyce I had was potentially helping me balance size your fleet, as you mentioned earlier. Maybe there's something being off there. Um, you guys currently have 34 vehicles that are 10 years or older in your fleet. So, you know, I, I think the exercise that we want to go through here, if we really want to take a look at your fleet, understand what your vehicles are being utilized for, can we write types of fleet? Can we get you out of those old gas suburbs? They don't need to be in there, they need to pass down to them. Can we help you replace vehicles, um, at a quicker pace than maybe even you're doing today? Um, so I'll give you an example, just to speak high-level direct examples. Right now, we have a client in Oregon, a government client that gets government incentives. Um, they're making money right now on their half-ton and three-quarter ton pickup trucks. So the slide deck I sent over, I'll send it over again. I apologize for my computer errors here, but, uh, basically to your point, right, you get very large incentives on vehicles. That's, that's part of being in government operation. So you allow them to buy an S250, $39,000 truck, you get $10,000 off invoice of the vehicle, you buy that for $29,000. This year alone, we were able to turn around a 2020 vehicle that was bought for $29,600, we were able to sell that vehicle for $39,200. The customer made $9,600 total in depreciation on that vehicle. And in fact, after maintenance and fuel, everything all in, they've made 74 cents per mile on that vehicle. The whole point of our program is not to, you know, it, it's not designed necessarily to tell you, you have to turn vehicles in at this very moment and you have to do that and that's the way it's going to be. It's to have that open dialogue and take every individual vehicle you have and, and case by case, take a look at it. I can tell you right now, the market's been the last five, six years, if you have any trucks in your fleet that's not like a service body or a dump truck or something like that, the plain Jane, half-ton, three-quarter ton pickup trucks, toolbox, ladder rack, anything like that, those trucks are worth a lot of money. It doesn't make sense to go out and you pay cash for them. You can actually do an equity lease or a finance on those vehicles for one year, turn around and get into a whole new truck, which is, I know for most people that's a little extreme, which is probably why you're on the three-year holding pattern now, but that's the kind of expertise that we bring to the table every single year when helping you make decisions on your fleet, and that's really where our partnership is.
Well, thank you. That, you know, we know that this market isn't going to last forever and we know that we kind of got lucky on the draw with, uh, you know, at least that aspect of the whole COVID pandemic. Um, did I hear you say that you didn't have any, uh, data from the county fleet to analyze beyond 2019? What was the year? I thought we were able to give you a, a pretty, a pretty well-updated list.
The list that I got from you, the newest vehicle on it was a 2018.
Okay.
So I don't know if you bought something in the last two years, possibly what you did. We did strip some vehicles out of the analysis, like some meaning and duty stuff, so if you bought like a S550 or some big vehicle from Roams, we have stripped those out of the analysis.
Okay. Mr. Pash?
I have here, um, a list of some of the vehicles we have, and, yeah, we've got several Ram pickup trucks, 2019s. Um, we've got, you know, we bought, uh, 2019 Ford S- We've got, you know, we bought 2019 Ford Escorts. So yeah, we do have several more vehicles that I don't think you may have on your list. And again, those are, those, those are within one year of being full-term for what our initial ask was for the board. But if, if Commissioner Boyce is going to ask you to come down here and look at our inventory, or get you, and maybe Rich, to get you a full list of inventory and highlighted in vehicles that are in our road inventory for county use, I would be 100%. Let's look at everything we have, because pickup trucks right now are averaging between a 20 and a 25% premium over-market. It's the highest they've ever been in history, a premium over-market. So if you can take advantage of that, I say let's do it.
Coast Auto doesn't have any cars in their lot, huh?
Why?
There's just, it's, it's, I've never seen it in all my...
Well, cars aren't as strong. Cars are only about 8 or 10%.
They don't have Jeeps, they don't have anything.
Trucks are 20 to 25%.
Commissioner Herzog had a comment there, and our largest auto dealer in Curry County, go ahead, Commissioner.
There's just no cars on the lot. There's no used cars, there's no new cars. There's no pickups, there's no Jeeps, there's, you know, it's a Chevy, it's Coast Auto, it's Chevy, Chevy GMC.
Chrysler.
Chrysler. It's just, it's, it's, it's odd.
I sold a card auction today that booked for 6,200, it sold for 87.
So...
Yeah, so I can give you a little bit more context on that as well. So I've been in this for 13 years, and I've never seen a year, obviously, like this. So GM cut off their entire 2021 border bank in January of this year. That's unheard of. They're not starting to max up yet until probably July, which means production won't start until probably September, November. And their border banks are gonna be extremely short. Ford's already cut off the vast majority of their fleet. They're about to cut off their super duty gear in the next 30 days or so. And Ram is coming out with their 2022 model year in June, so production won't start until November. So you're not looking at getting a Ram product until probably this time next year. So that's what I'm saying, when we're having conversations with our clients, it's gonna be bad. And the, the microchip shortage might come back at some point in time. But from what we're seeing in our industry, and what we're hearing from our experts, is that this is gonna go well into 2022, because the manufacturers are all already a little far behind. They're taking trade orders now to catch up for last year's, you know, lack of production. And it's just gonna take another year by itself, and even more. So I think there is an open window here to take advantage of the used car market. If you need to offer those vehicles for you and use that equity to help you replace some other vehicles, and net-net, you know, make it a, a cost-neutral scenario, that's just gonna continue to drive down your maintenance, drive down your vehicle expenses, and overall, that's how you're gonna save money. And then where enterprise expertise comes in is long-term. It's not just, okay, well, there's an open opportunity here, enterprise helps out the vehicles, that's fine. But what I mean by that is that every single year, we sit down with our clients. We assess the fleet, we analyze it, we put recommendations in front of you, so you can make relevant, informed decisions on your fleet. So that's the long-term goal of the partnership with us.
And the long-term really was my, was my biggest interest, because the, the market changes. And it was, wasn't to in any way recommend that we weren't managing well. You know, we've spun a lot of plates with what we're dealing with, as, as everyone is in the entire country. So if there's a way, and first of all, I, I need to get you the updated information, I apologize. I, I didn't know that it was, that's what was sent to me, and it was sent rather promptly, and in a good way. And so that would be my, my first responsibility here, is to get it to you and make sure we have what you need. And then, yeah, preparing for the future. Best-case scenario, not so good, or worst-case scenario, put it that way.
Yeah, and hey, this is our first practice, this is why I wanted to have this conversation. I didn't want to do a full proposal yet, speaking with you all. I, I wanted to have a conversation and get an understanding of, of what's going on and, and your thoughts on it. I appreciate being forward with me and telling me your, your, your opinions on it. So, you know, I think what a good next step would be is obviously getting an updated fleet list, updating the model I put together for you. And then I would also probably have a sidebar conversation with your roadmaster. Just, you know, I think, you know, he's more connected to the day-to-day operations of your fleet. And he can give you more insight on specs and trucks and what he has. You know, I think that might be a, a, just a good conversation offline with him, maybe for 20 minutes. And then once I gather the information and gather the data, put together a good plan and this, that, I'll come back and propose that to you all, so you can get a vision on it.
Send, send me an email, if you would, on the step-by-step of what we need to do. And I, I'm sure the roadmaster would be agreeable to getting you that information and working with you. And he's, he's a very productive guy, so sometimes you need to get something done. You go to the busiest person to do, and, to do it, and they, they usually produce. So send me that email, if you would, please, and we will, we'll do a little more comprehensive work for you.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're already doing something, that's, that's a good sign, you know. When we met two years ago, maybe you'd all agree that's not the case.
Yes.
I'm happy to hear that you're, you're already envisioning kind of the cycling point. And I think your dealership background is, is super important, because it's not like it's rocket science here. If we want to buy the vehicle, it's the best, lowest that we can. And we want to sell the vehicle at the highest that we can. And if you can do those two things, you're controlling your operating expenses in the middle. And the number one cost of owning and operating a fleet is fuel and maintenance. It's not the acquisition cost of the vehicle over time. So how can you get into a situation where you don't have 30 vehicles that are over 10 years old? Or heck, you got some vehicles that are over 20 years old in your fleet. And maybe some of those are gone, maybe some of those are disposed of, maybe they're spares, I don't know. I think having a competition with your roadmasters, like, really get a, a real list of what's actually being prepared on a daily basis, versus like right now, I have an insurance sheet that I'm working off of.
Very good.
Did you all have any other questions? You mentioned you had a few more, maybe possibly, that I can answer for you?
No, you did great. Much appreciated, and thanks for your patience.
Maybe a fee schedule?
Well, I have to borrow from my computer crashing on me, but one time I needed it today, so.
Go ahead, Commissioner. We have, Commissioner Pash has a question.
Well, I just had one more thing, if I could. If you would also, when you send us your, your thoughts on that, also send us enterprise's fee schedule for your, for what you're going to be charging us.
Yeah, I can, yeah. So we're, so just to answer that real quickly, we're members of Sourcewell. So we have a RFP agreement for Fleet Management Services. And you're all members of Sourcewell already. So that's how a lot of the other counties and cities in the state of Oregon have to give back off that RFP. So I will send you that RFP, because your parking is all locked in already.
Thank you, sir.
Well, other than that, if there's no other questions, I'll let you all have some time back at your day. I appreciate the opportunity. And, Mr. Boyce, I will send you over a recap email of our next steps and, and things that I'm looking for.
Hey, thank you again.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
You all have a good one. Appreciate it.
Bye for now.
Man, I can drill.
You okay? Okay, last agenda item. Mr. Nichols, come on up here. New generation forestry?
Next generation forestry.
I said it again.
I'm gonna put a card on your desk before I leave.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, I was able to...
It actually says new on the, on here.
Yeah, that's because Commissioner Boyce messed up.
Okay.
Yeah. But we put his resume on your counters there, commissioners, and...
If you, if you look at the...
This is...
Proposal that says next generation.
Okay.
We've got, we've got some ideas and some responsibilities and some tasks that are before the, the board here. And, you know, primarily what generated this was the 38 acres we have on, I always call it Ridge Creek, but it's Dry Creek. And just so the public knows, it's a beautiful stand of forest, and we'll pull that up here. But, you know, yeah, I think I said in the agenda routing slip that it's about halfway as a crow flies between the Oak and the Sixers River. And it's surrounded by the Kokil Indian Tribe on two sides, and Lone Rock on the third, and Roseburg, I call them Roseburg Lumber, but that's not their official name, but they're timber holdings. But everybody's gotta show off just a little bit here. This is looking straight south. Not in a roll, sorry.
I don't know if we want to mess with Grassy Knob. There's a real mean, a retired attorney lives up there.
Oh, you weren't gonna say that, I thought. Uh, this is looking the same direction. And this is looking the bottom, so it would be more south than southwest. Uh, and then we have an aerial here, I think. That's actually, that's in your packet, but this is a, this is a map. I don't know if I can enlarge this.
Whose log property are you standing on?
That was just logged by the Kokil tribe.
Okay.
And this is the Curry County section right here. And this is, uh, this, everything around it essentially has been logged, down to the, down to the, pretty close to the creek here. And yeah, Scott, I forgot to put the map you did, that really shows, you know, right dead center in that 38 acres is, you know...
Got a copy if you guys want to look at it?
Yeah, that, I, I think it's on our screen too, but... So my idea board is, you know, we have 33 acres now of timber across from Pacific High School. We have 40 acres across from Crook Point, east of, you know, Crook Point and Pistol River. We still have considerable forest left in Forest Lake, other, other places. And we need an analysis, especially on this piece, is somewhat urgent as far as if it's ready to harvest now, what should we do, what shouldn't we do? What's the benefit to the county with a log market? You know, is there, is there a company that could do it rather quickly and efficiently and affordable, affordable for us if we decide to go that route? And so that's where you come in, and you provided us a contract, you come highly recommended. And, you know, I appreciate your resume, appreciate your time, and...
Thanks for having me.
My dream is for Curry County to have a forestry program sometime, might be after my time. But, you know, and also when we have the American Rescue Plan, would we want to buy timber if it was a good buy-in? And, you know, to, to do the long-term investment for the future. Not recommending that, but we also have Lobster Creek Camp that, some pretty impressive forest background. Just having said that, you can say, oh my gosh, Boyce wants to log Lobster Creek. But no, it's, it's an addition to our holdings and tough, tough, tight budgets coming up within our, within our program responsibility. And, and as I often say, the revenue pie is getting smaller, and the expense pie seems to be getting bigger. So thank you for this work you did here. And I was up there, what, two or three months ago, met with three of the Kokil tribe. They were interested, still are, I think, as far as either managing, harvesting, some combination, you know, long-term. They've already done, they're already starting the reforestation process in the, in the sections around that they have, that they have harvested within the last year. And it's, it's just a valuable piece of property. And I, I want to get some professional advice for our board that would make potentially good recommendations. So you haven't been, had a chance to go up to this piece yet, though, have you? But you're, you are familiar with Rob Lasky of the tribe and...
Yeah, and I've, I've been by that piece. I just didn't really pay much attention to it when I was in the area. I was buying logs from Rob, from the tribe, when I was log buyer for South Coast Lumber.
Gotcha. Sure.
So yeah, it is my intention to go up there and check it out, but I kinda wanted to see if there was gonna be a contract first, before I spent time doing that. If you'd like to know a little bit about my background, I can start there.
Please, just have a microphone on your right just a little bit closer to you. So both of them are, there you go. Good, thank you.
Is that a little better?
Take your time.
So I've been in the timber slash lumber industry for the last 17 years. I grew up in Crescent City. I started logging back...
Oh, no, you're a redwood guy, then.
I don't know if I would have shared that, sir.
Well, I consider it a success story for Crescent City.
There you go.
I started logging back in 1999, did that for two and a half years. Worked for South Coast Lumber at the Plywood Plant for close to two years. Ran heavy equipment for Tidewater for a couple of years. And then shortly after that, I went back to college and got my degree in forestry. With the intent to, at some point in my life, start a consulting business, which I just did this year. I work by myself, for myself, so I don't have any employees at this point. So I do subcontract some things, like tree planting and herbicide application and things like that.
You see, we're just, planning director Crocker just walked in, you're in trouble now.
Are you two related?
No.
Okay, all right.
We know each other.
Yeah.
So, you know, not too long ago, Commissioner Boyce reached out to me and, you know, asked if I'd be interested in helping the county make an educated decision in what to do with that property. And I would like to be involved in that. I, I do have, you know, thoughts in my mind that, that I could, I could help you make a decision as to whether or not it's the right decision economically to have the tribe manage it. Or maybe it would be a good economic decision to, to hire me to, to manage it, along with maybe some of your other tracts of timber. So that's why I'm here.
Questions, Mr. Herzog?
Yeah, so how would we start something like that? You know, the 38 acres is not huge, but it's, it's a, it's a chunk of land, and...
Yeah.
And we have, there's access to it? There's a road into it, or...
Yeah, there's, there's a road right next to it.
There better be a road, huh?
There would have to be roads built to get into the stand so you could log. But that, I wouldn't think that would take much. You got roads all around it.
Oh, you, you need to give me detail on that. The road goes right to the top of it.
Right, but a 40-acre tract, you know...
Get down to the bottom, you mean?
Generally, you, you, it looks like it's ground-based, so logger doesn't want to ground-base a 40-acre unit from the top of the unit. I'd have to see it, but I'm managing property for a family in Kokil, the Hogan family. And how I started with them is, I didn't cruise the timber, like you suggested, Court. I just walked it and kinda gave an estimate of what I thought the volume was. It saved them quite a bit of money, because to cruise 40 acres could cost, if you're hiring a consultant, could cost you up to a couple thousand dollars, depending on the consultant. So what I generally do when, when I'm helping a landowner, I walk, I estimate what I think the logging cost is, what I think the volume is. I call around to various mills and learn what the market is. And then I provide you an appraisal of what I think you could log it for, and what I think it would cost you to reforest it. If you wanted to do any herbicide application to prep it for planting, I would guide you in that direction. So that's...
Bishop Pash?
Not to be the devil's advocate here, I guess. I'm just wondering what service you provide versus, like, I know Dr. Williams up on North Bank just had all that land up of his property logged. And I'm guessing it was probably 40 or 50 acres he logged out. The logger that was up there came over while he was logging and talked to me about my property.
Yeah.
And he basically did the same thing. This is how much volume you'll have. This is, you know, what your reforestation's gonna cost. This is if you, you know, how you want to clear your land, how you want to re-prepare it. You know, what, and I believe he worked for South Coast, I'm not...
No, it was Brett O'Brien.
Oh, yeah, that's who it was, okay.
He was the logger, so he does kinda, in his own way, do consulting, along with logging.
And that's what I'm saying. What can you provide for the county versus a logging company like that?
Similar product, really. But I can tell you that most log buyers, if they have a professional forester that they trust, that they're working with, in a lot of cases, you're gonna get better prices from the mills. But not, not to say anything bad about Brett, you know, Brett has a good reputation.
Yeah.
And so...
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, sir.
So, you know, what I'd like the board to consider, maybe not necessarily today, but on the long-term, is to inventory all of these tracts of timber. You know, long-term, make a decision on what the value is and, you know, how we could manage, you know, what we could recommend to the citizens, what we could turn into parks, bike paths, you know, when you... What we could turn into parks, bike paths, you know, when you start, yeah, when you start figuring logging costs, I'm way out of my league, especially replanting costs. And what the laws are required on that, you know, potential damage to watersheds. I know that Josephine Coos and Douglas County all have forestry programs. And they have really qualified people that help them make decisions and they manage their forest like the tribes, very, very well. And so is Curry County ready for that? I think maybe we are. And so that's why I made the contact with you. I really appreciate having the opportunity to serve with you on the Wild Rivers Coast Forest Collaborative. I think you contributed very well to that. You know, I haven't talked to any other contractors, but you know, you're at the, you live here and I think you have a vested interest in Curry County and that enthuses me, of course. And this, this piece of property here in the map that you just, you know, that the public has and that the Commissioners have in their packets, you know, that's, it looks like it's ready to be harvested. And sooner you do that, you know, if that's the decision this board makes, then what are we prepared for next? All the above, and is it the right decision? You know, we could even potentially sell it. And we're never going to be able to do anything else with it, with the surrounded by and, you know, the other, the neighbors. And you know, but that's why I'm very interested in having you be involved. And there again, you know, look at the other tracts that we have, become familiar with Forest Lake, become familiar with Crook Point. And then of course, the biggest thing that comes up in my heart, soul and mind is what's the fire danger? Are we managing well there, are we prepared, are we fire-wising? Are we, are we just going to shrug our shoulders and hope for the best? Or are we going to be a little bit proactive and, you know, be part of that management that we really tend to challenge the Forest Service with on their management? And it has everything to do with roads and fuel abatement, you know, all the above. So yeah, Board, that's where I'm kind of going long-term, go ahead John. Commissioner Herzog?
My question is, or my thoughts are, it only makes sense to me if the county can make money off of logging this property and then twenty years from now, log it again. So.
Probably forty.
Yeah, forty, not twenty.
Okay, forty years later.
You get some of those Australian poplars and put in there.
Well, okay, forty years, so you know, you haven't cruised it or anything, so just on a guesstimate, you know, forty acres, it looks forested to me, full, you know, could, can we pull those logs off there, make money and afford to plant and make money? And hire you to do it and, you know, I've heard a lot about the Kokil Tribe. I'm a pure Brookings boy, so I think South Coast Lumber is, who I, you know, I don't, I don't know about the Kokil Tribe that much, so, but I like, I like South Coast Lumber. Good friend of Fred Arnold's, you probably remember Fred. Anyway, so can you give me a kind of a, is that a question? Did you hear a question in there?
Yeah, I did. I heard you to ask me to look at my crystal ball without seeing the standard timber and tell you if it's worth it.
You are a successful person.
My guess is, yeah, it probably is, but I, and if you wanted a cheap way of finding out, I could spend three hours out there and an hour or two in the office and give you an idea before putting a lot of time and effort into it. You know, I do that for other clients.
Okay, so I was just looking, because I saw somewhere on here that would, there was a price sheet on, down, all the way down? Okay. So for five hours at seventy dollars an hour?
Plus mileage.
Plus mileage.
Four fifty.
I, we got to, we got to start somewhere with saying, you know, is this, is this a viable?
I'll tell you what the, if you like, I'll tell you what the tribe said and their representatives. And I won't say the amount, but it was a very impressive figure. But.
Why can't you say the amount?
Well, I mean, it's a million bucks, okay? But they're just like, till Scott sees it, he wouldn't begin to want to make an estimate. But we got to get him up there first. He would be our second opinion, the Kokil Tribe showed a lot of interest in managing it, harvesting it, and then manage it for the next twenty-five, thirty years through a contract. And the reason they made sense, and Scott has reviewed this quite a bit too, the reason it made sense is because they have all that land around there. So as they replant their portions now and back and forth, it would make sense to consider having them do it. But if Mr. Nichols and his company went up there and said, I wouldn't log this for five years because the market's down, whatever, or, you know, it's not that good a timber, you know? That's the second opinion that I would really like to put before the board here.
A hundred bucks, I'm going to need to get mine re-looked at.
Well, I like South Coast because they're in Curry County and Kokil Tribe actually, you know, is not in Curry County, right?
They do have some, they do have some tribal.
Property, but I mean.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying.
They're Coos, you know, Kokil is Coos County, so.
I'm confused why you keep mentioning South Coast.
You're confused, why?
Because what do they have to do with it versus the tribe?
Well, there's.
They don't have a branch of their program that does analysis or consulting, I, do they? Privately?
No.
Yeah, I think.
But I mean, we'd sell the logs to South Coast?
Well, you might consider it, but I could tell you right now, you'd make more money selling it to almost anyone else.
Okay.
Because they have a tremendous, well, all the mills, oh, Scott, have.
Everybody has a tremendous amount of volume.
Yes.
But you know, there's mills, you know, depending on what that log is, there's mills in Riddle that are paying nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a thousand for logs. And South Coast is paying seven-hundred or six-seventy-five even to some landowners. So even with the extended haul, and that's, that's the biggest thing I do for clients is I help them, you know, sort their logs, market their logs, not just sell to one person because they like that person, but make the most money that they can by merchandising what they have.
Well, and I'll just clarify, you know, I'm for South Coast because they're a Curry County.
Sure.
Business and have been for a hundred years. So that's, that's the only reason I say South Coast.
Okay.
They've done a lot for Curry County, they, you know, stayed in business when Simonsons and Westbrook's and everybody else quit logging and the mills closed down. The Fowler family has kept Curry County going for really a good, long time, so.
Thank you for mentioning that and it is very true, it's an understatement. And you know, they would, when and if we decided to sell this, they'd be able to bid, just like any other.
And if the tribe managed it, or you hired somebody else to manage it, I mean, the tribe may sell it to South Coast.
Well, they would.
I mean, they're selling a lot of their wood to South Coast right now.
Yeah, and they would probably want to bid too. You know, they're close, they're close, just like South Coast is. So. Yeah, so we'll get back to you on this. We can't make a decision in a workshop, but I think you're probably getting a sense of what the board would like to do. And it's anxious, you would probably, you know, it's behind a lock gate, so Kokil, you know, you know the people that we know there and they would.
Yeah, I talked to Rob, it's open all week, so.
Good.
If you wanted me to go up there and look, I'd just go during the week when the gates are open.
That one crew from Myrtle Point, they're probably long out of there now, I think, aren't they? There was logging just down, just down the hill, so up to the top right of that map.
Oh, Gibbs Logging?
I think that's who it is.
Yeah, they're out there somewhere, but yeah, I don't think they're right in that immediate vicinity right now.
Okay.
Well, Brett would be one too, I mean, he's right in Port Orford, he's just.
Yeah.
He's been, he's a good logger. Anyway.
Anything else, Board?
No.
Council Pope?
Okay, thank you.
Good to meet you, Scott.
Thanks, nice to meet you, Scott.
Great to have you here, thank you. Okay, so we are, you know, we never did close out of executive session, so we, we need to go back into executive session. Then we're going to go back in, we're still recessed in regular session from eleven fifteen?
Are you closing this meeting? Yeah, you did.
We did not close it, did we?
You did.
Yeah. You instructed staff to proceed as instructed.
Okay, we're going to close the workshop first and then we're going to go back into executive, second executive session, so we can discuss what we needed to. We never give any staff, we didn't give the staff direction.
Well, and I.
That's in regular meeting, not in your executive.
I know.
Well, I have some executive session stuff that I found out during the.
Oh, okay, gotcha. So that's why we're going back in executive.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. So let's meet back here at, right at four-thirty, that's nine minutes, guys, if that's okay.